Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for December 17, 2018. The first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. The next agenda item is we have three sets of minutes. We have executive session from November 26, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to put that off until our next executive session. There was a couple errors in those minutes that I'd like to address and have corrected.
Not a problem, we'll take care of that. The next is regular session, December 3, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I'll refrain from voting simply because I missed that meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular session meeting minutes for 12, 3, 2018.
And I would make that unanimous. And the last one is the executive session of 12, 10, 2018.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Not seeing anybody, we're going to move into our public hearings. And the first one is Parkhurst Enterprises Incorporated Transfer of a Wine and Malt Retail Liquor License. And if there's anybody here to speak against it, you'll have an opportunity to speak afterwards.
Or for it.
Please identify yourselves.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Tom Truax, Attorney for the proposed transfer of sale in Massachusetts. With me, to my immediate right, is Mr. Kishan Patel. He is the president of the corporate entity. He is also the proposed license manager. And to my far right, next to him, is Mina Patel. She is the treasurer of the corporation.
You can sit, you can relax, sorry.
The underlying transaction is fairly simple. They are buying not only the business, they are also buying the real estate. And copies of both contracts are included in that package. Rockland Trust is providing the financing for this transaction. And a copy of the proposed minute or commitment letter is included in the package as well. As for the store itself, the premises and the operation, they both will remain the same. This is pretty much going to be a turnkey operation. What's going on now will pretty much be the same process, the same layout, the same operation as the current licensee. Also in the audience is Lucy Marks, who is the current licensee.
Good evening.
And as to experience in this type of business, we have a package store and a convenience store. The Patels, the whole family, Mr. Patel is here as well. He is the owner, he will be the proposed owner of the real estate. They have owned two convenience stores over the past 14 years. They come here with great experience in convenience stores. As to package stores and more importantly, beer and wine, they have not owned or operated a package store, but Mr. Kishan Patel, he is, all three of them have gotten their certification with Campbell Trent, which is an in-course, unlike the online courses, which I really don't pay, really give much to. Campbell Trent does an in-person training course, and it's very good, and I think they've all, they all learn a lot from that. In addition, Mr. Patel, in anticipation of hopefully this going through, he worked at a liquor store this past summer, Rosie's Liquors in Abington. He worked 15 to 20 hours per week. I went through my typical questions with him as to what he does regarding, the whole routine, and he was pretty much on the ball with everything. So it sounds like he got good training while he was there over the summer. In addition, according to the purchase and sale agreement, there's also training going to be provided by the current owners for two weeks before the closing and two weeks after the closing. And finally, you know, I've been doing this for 30 some odd years, I give my speech to all these guys, I go through everything with them, the rules, the regulations, the state statutes and things like that. And I've gone through that with them, and will make sure at the closing, I repeat everything I usually say. So I think they're coming into this with pretty good experience, and I think the transition will be smooth. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, you come with the right experience, and you know, I think your, the seriousness of which you discuss the license is important. You know, my guidance to anybody is beyond protecting the citizens of Milford and the general community against underage drinking and whatever have you, there are other things that apply to that license. Somebody who's obviously intoxicated shouldn't be purchasing. But you know, more importantly, as importantly, protect your license, right? Because the last thing this board or any future board wants to do is sanction a business for carelessness. And you know, we do take that serious, and as I, as I know you take your license serious. You know, I've noted that the, you know, right across the board, there are no issues. It's obviously conforming because it's an existing use. No outstanding taxes that we have to clear up. No issues or concerns noted by the police chief. And the only thing that is noted at the Board of Health requires that additional documentation be filed with the Board of Health Office.
They're in the process of doing that. Normally, we do the applications for the health, the retail food permit right around the, right after we do the hearing here, so.
Okay.
About four to six weeks for the ABCC gets it. We don't want to be too premature and bugging the health department on these things.
Getting ahead of yourself. Yeah, no worries, it is a long, lengthy process. And I just note that as part of this, and I just want to make sure I have this correct, there's also a pledge of license involved to Rockland Trust Bank.
Yes.
Okay.
And Rockland Trust wants to make sure that they operate it the way it should be operated, no underage issues.
You've answered the questions that I would have, you answered them right out of the gate, in terms of the certification, the instructor-led certification, which I agree with you is always better, it gives you an opportunity to go back and forth. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know my colleague Bill handled all of the logistics from the, from the town standpoint. I'll just say, good luck, you have big shoes to fill. This has been a Milford landmark for a long time, and I hope you continue in the same way that it's been serviced in the past, so thank you very much.
And I think if I may comment is that Selectman Buckley made a comment, one thing we do take very serious in this community is serving alcohol. And later on this evening, I won't talk about it now, but one of the things we talk about is residents, I'm sorry, businesses where people have been that shouldn't be behind the wheel of an automobile, or shouldn't even be walking on the sidewalk. So if I could just caution you on that, we take it very serious. We don't take it lightly, we take it very, very serious. I wish you the best, I welcome you to the community. And I just want to read that from the building commissioner, there's no problems. Then town planner, approved. Tax collector, no outstanding liens. Town treasurer, onboard. Fire chief, approved. Police chief, no issues at all. And the board of health, as Selectman Buckley said, small little issue of the transfer of licensees, which I know you're working on. So with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I just think there's opportunity with the, being a public hearing, to see if there's anybody who would like to speak on the topic before we make our vote.
And with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay. So, the first motion is a license, is the transfer of the license to the entity name of Shiv Amkupa Inc., doing businesses purchased street market. I'll make that motion separately. And that's a transfer of license, pledge of inventory, and we'll leave it at that.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman, is to vote to approve the pledge of a license, and the pledge specifically is to Rockland Trust Bank.
I'll second that as well.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Milford.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
We will miss it.
And we'll miss you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, have a good night. Happy holidays.
You too.
And our next public hearing is the tax hearings. Is there anybody here for Cedar Street Market? Is there anybody here for Cafe Sorrento? Mr. Administrator, how do you want to handle this?
Basically, both establishments were notified. I have had conversations with both owners, who indicated they would make payment. So if the board would like to vote to renew, subject to the payment of taxes, and then I will deal with both of them. If there was a need to come back, I would try to schedule with the board.
Bill?
Yeah, so I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the issuance of the license contingent upon payment of taxes for Cafe Sorrento and Louis T. Tran, Cedar Street Market. Yeah, that's the motion.
No, I'll, I'll second that. Yeah, and hopefully that'll all get cleared up in the very near future.
Both have cooperated in the past, so.
Yeah, and that's what the, that's what the track record's been that you explained, so.
You want to mention the other two since they're on the agenda?
Oh, they already paid.
Yeah, I know, but the public doesn't know that they're on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, so let me just, yeah. So Rick, just real quick, and I'm going to make it unanimous.
Yeah, okay, good.
But if you could, please, just let them know that we're serious about it.
Yeah, sure.
And to Selectman Buckley's credit, there are two people on here, the Turtle Tavern and Richard's Food and Pub, which have already paid.
They have paid.
So anybody in the general public that sees the agenda knows that they have, they've paid.
They're current, there are no issues.
Right. Okay, next agenda item is scheduled appointments. First one is Premier Automart. Right up, and identify yourselves, please.
I'm going to be taking over Premier Automart, and this is Abe, the current owner of the location.
Currently Mobico, and I'm going to transfer it to my nephew.
To your, I'm sorry, your nephew?
Yes.
Oh, good, in the family.
It's in the family.
So Mobico.
It's Onwapori, Miso Inc.
Okay.
Standard Miso Inc., I think. Mobico, it's Onwapori, Patsy Courthouse. It's a small dealer.
Yeah, yeah.
It used to be wholesale automart.
Right.
Years ago, then I took it.
Bill?
So what's, I'm assuming everything is the same intended use, transfer of license means the same intended use, same restrictions?
Yeah, yeah.
For vehicles on the property? Are you clear about what the restrictions are, the guidelines for that, and requirements?
Yes.
Okay. The only question I have is the correct pronunciation of your last name.
J R E I J.
Same, like for my last name. J R E I, Jrej.
Jrej, okay. Jrej, okay. Thank you. No, and you know, with that, I don't see any issues, I don't have any further questions. There's a great deal that's provided here, and so we have sufficient information, I think. They understand the stipulations on the license and the property, so I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either. I'm very familiar with your operation, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get them on their way.
Yeah, and again, building commissioner is good, town planner is okay, tax collector, no outstanding taxes, town treasurer is good, fire chief approval, police chief, no issues and concerns, and board of health, no problems at all, so I would make that unanimous.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to transfer the ownership of the Class II license from Mobico to EJN Inc., consistent with the request.
And I'll second that.
Make that unanimous.
Lots of luck at that location.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
And you're still going to be there to guide them occasionally, right?
Yeah, we've been there for now a few months since May, and now it's time to pass it on.
That's right.
Take care.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, you too.
Next agenda item is the Milford Regional Hospital Common Vicuula License.
Hi there.
Hi there.
How are you?
Hey, I'm Jennifer Gouger, the general manager for Metz Culinary Management.
Looking to transfer the license?
Yes, it was formerly held by Sedexo Culinary Management. We are the new food service contractor taking over.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Great business. We hope to see, you know, in terms of the hospital, we hope to see that, you know, process only improve over time, and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
If there's not any other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
To transfer the common vicuula license at the Milford Regional Medical Center to Metco Company and care of Milford Regional Medical Center. And I, that's all I have. No other questions, no other?
No, we need a food service at the, at the Milford Hospital.
I would provide it.
So we want to move this along. No, I'll gladly second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Congratulations.
Have a good night.
Thank you, and happy holidays and welcome to Milford. Next agenda item is town administrator's report, Rick?
Yes. Just a few items tonight. Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that Town Hall will be closed at 1:00 PM on December 24th, the day before Christmas, and 1:00 PM on Monday, December 31st, the day before New Year. Just, I want to thank Barbara Edwards and the students of the Evergreen Center for the beautiful wreaths that are now hung on the outside of Town Hall. I must say, their visit the last six years that I've been here is one of the highlights of the Christmas season, and we appreciate their hard work, and they are just beautiful wreaths that adorn Town Hall. Just a, hopefully a final update on the LED lights. The project is pretty much complete, just a few additional lights here and there, where I'm getting calls that haven't been installed. We did receive, and I have filed the required paperwork with National Grid in order for the town to receive the incentive rebate, which is in the amount of $120,650. That should be, and we expect, before the end of this calendar year. Update on the downtown facade program. We're now ready to implement. The application program information is now on the town website. We will now begin to receive applications, they'll be reviewed by a selection committee comprised of a subcommittee of the downtown revitalization. The committee members will be Attorney Laura Mann, Josh Leoch, and Tony Pinto. All applications will be submitted to the Selectmen's office. We also have contracted with both an architect and a grant writer to assist in the implementation of the program. Finally, I have submitted a press release to the Daily News, Town Crier, Milford TV, and W R M R C to help advertise the program. And I want to say that Ron Pagnini is also walking up in downtown hall and delivering in hand applications and information to all business owners and/or tenants along the Main Street block, in the area that we're going to be doing. One final item, I have confirmed and been informed that Ardar Group has sold its facility and land at One National Street. The new buyer is Milford National LLC. I met today with Gregory Shane, he's one of the principals of Milford National LLC, along with his attorney, Joseph Antonellis. Town Planner Larry Duncan also attended this meeting. Mr. Shane informed us that they will be applying for a building permit to install a fence to secure the property. I believe they went downstairs today to do that. They will have other security on the property. They intend, they tell me, to demolish a portion of the building, roughly about 15% to 20%, and install a new roof, loading docks, insulation, a heating system, and make other needed repairs. They will be hiring an architect to help determine the best use of the facility, as well as a broker to help market it. They are a company then that would seek tenants to lease portions of the building. They estimate one to three tenants, depending on what the market research shows. They have an estimated timeline to complete the renovations by late summer. They would like to, and they will be requesting a meeting with the Board of Selectmen at a January meeting, to begin the process. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, that's not much, but it's a lot, Rick. So, you know, first of all, great work. You handled the LED light conversion by yourself, not, it wasn't by committee, and you drove that to completion. And I know that the residents of Milford are thankful for the $120,000 rebate that is committed by National Grid for this program. I personally think it's improved, improves public safety. Number one, we know all our lights are working, which we didn't necessarily know. They would dribble in, request to fix a bulb, so all lights have been gone through, all lights are converted to LED, we get a brighter light, and we get brighter light for less wattage and less cost to the community. So I just want to say thank you for your work in spearheading that and working with National Grid.
Thank you.
And it was done in short order. It was amazing, the progress that was made quickly.
They did a nice job, yep.
Yeah, the only other thing, the downtown revitalization committee, as it relates to the facade program, you know, I think it's important that we check in with that committee, and we do it periodically. And I'd like through the chair to ask that we have the committee members come in, officers, some members, Mr. Pagnini, to have them give us an update, because by the time we meet again, we should have an understanding of the number of applicants, cost of the program, and how it's looking.
So Rick, you'll take care of that the next meeting?
Yes, in fact, you're correct, we should have a number of applications, I believe, submitted and probably reviewed by the subcommittee, so either the first or the second meeting in January, depending on their progress, we'll definitely have them in.
And I did see your press release, Rick, great job. And you know, if anybody wants to test, Mr. Pagnini's resolve on this issue, and that committee's resolve on this issue, you only have to look at the amount of work this committee's putting in to improve the downtown of Milford, and to physically walk the downtown, go see the owners, give them applications, inform them what the applications are about and how they can benefit from those. We'll see how, how long the money lasts, and you know, the mechanics of it, but there's no, no questioning, Mr. Pagnini and that committee's resolve on this, they're committed to the community. And for folks, if they want to know a model, or see a model on where community members can help the community in volunteer efforts, it's efforts like this, where we have challenges, we've been talking about a lot of opportunities, we've been exercising some of those opportunities, but with business owners coming forward and setting up a committee, ad hoc committee sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, seeing this takeoff, takeoff is really invigorating, and I'm appreciative, and I want, appreciative, and I want to say thank you to that committee.
I appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, regarding the downtown revitalization committee, the chairman, Ron Pagnini, sent, sent the three of us an email just a little while ago before coming into this meeting, asking for maybe our, our support of physically being able to attend Wednesday's meeting at 6:00. I'm going to do my best to be back from Boston in time to, to attend. I'm hoping that you two gentlemen are available, not to have a formal joint meeting between the two. I certainly don't expect any decisions to be made that evening, so I think it'd be quite okay for, if not all of us, for a majority of us to show up if possible. But they have, you know, quite a few things going on, everything that Selectman Buckley mentioned, plus some, some additional things that I think if we can, we, we should show our support if possible, just letting them know that, you know, we're, we're here, we've taken this very seriously, this has been a priority of all three of us during our chairmanships. And I think we're, you know, we're seeing real results in a very short order of time. I often tell folks that it, you know, it took 30 years to, to get to a level where people didn't like how things were, were, were looking, but it's taken very short amount of time for the three of us to actually start the turnaround. And I think that's something that's very important, because a lot of problems that take that many years to get to often take twice as long to repair. And when you have people on board, like Ronnie and the rest of the committee, and quite honestly, all three of us on the same page when it comes to this, things can happen quickly, whether it's taking down buildings, taking properties, coming up with ways of encouraging property owners and business owners to, to maybe present themselves a little differently, that, that makes the downtown appeal an improvement as a whole. So I just want to say that, because I think that's one of the things that not only this board, but a lot of town boards and committees can be very proud of, because we're all really on the same page with this. And that's what it takes to get, to get to where we're going. So I just wanted to mention that. Again, I'm going to try to be there. I'm hoping that a majority of us can, can make it, again, not for decisions to be made, but just to show support for what they're doing, and whatever, you know, additional calls they have in the fire, because I think they're on the cusp of presenting some, some real nice options for Main Street.
So if I may, Rick, I, first of all, I want to say thank you on the light project.
Thank you.
Great job, a lot of work on your end.
Thank you.
Nice, nice, nice job. I think what's important for the general public to know, as the three of us do know, is that the downtown revitalization committee is totally volunteer. So these people dedicate their time, Selectman Buckley made reference to walking up and down Main Street, handing out flyers on how to improve your business. It's a totally, totally volunteer board that cares deeply, deeply about this community. And we should be very proud of people like that, people that care about the community. And we talk about it all the time, we say, you know, how come more people don't get involved? Well, here's an example where people do get involved, and to Selectman Kincaid's point, in a very short amount of time, they're making a difference. They're making a difference already. So I would, I would want to say to, to that committee, thank you, thank you for taking the time, and thank you for getting involved.
And Mr. Chairman, along with that, you know, it shouldn't be lost that we're committing resources, you know, we talk about whether it's weeds in downtown on Main Street, whether it's the resources associated with the ongoing maintenance of the property that didn't exist a year ago for the property across from Sacred Heart.
Exactly.
We guarantee, we guaranteed that somebody would take ownership for that and maintain that, because, you know, for years, it's, it would get cleaned up, and then it would fall by the wayside. Get cleaned up and fall by the wayside. Now we're going to make sure that it's maintained, it's a central point within our, within our town, and you know, there's just, you know, the land taking, you know, we can't always drive every initiative, but we can drive the leadership, the, the commitment that we're committed to the, to the downtown, we're committed to where it makes sense, TIF agreements, land takings, if necessary, especially for buildings that are dilapidated and falling down. So we're committed to being resourceful and using any of the tools in the toolbox. It shouldn't be lost, one other thing that shouldn't be lost is each of these decisions, whether it's, whether it is the taking of land, whether it is the acquisition of land, whether it is the expenditures or funds, all of those are sponsored articles that go to town meeting to get the support of town meeting.
Right.
So I want to say thank you to the town meeting members, because as much as we might like to say that we thought of something, it's a, it's a check and balance system to make sure we've got it right.
Right.
And so town meeting members have been supportive. This is the beginning, and I look forward to what the future has to bring.
Thank you. Will?
No further comment.
Okay. Next agenda item is old business in the zoning board of appeals, there's a vacancy in the zoning board of appeals. Bill?
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to look through the ZBA applicants that have come in. There are some, been some people that have been waiting quite a long time, and I noted the first one is from 2016, and demonstrated a need in this case not to check all the boxes to be a member of just- the first one is from 2016, and demonstrated a need in this case not to check all the boxes to be a member of just any committee, and there's nothing wrong with that, because sometimes it's a way to get involved and to start. But Mr. Burns specifically checked off Zoning Board of Appeals in his application on March 25th of 2016, and, you know, I have no reason to doubt he has the requisite skills. I've looked at lots of other ones. There are great applicants right across the board looking to get involved. Some, in some cases, we've already appointed members who have applied for this to other committees, so we ought to be mindful of that when we make the application. That's all I have to say right now, Mr. Chairman.
No, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Burns, Roland Way here in Massachusetts, here in Milford, is my top choice as well. I even had a conversation with him going back almost four years ago, prior to him applying for this, and he is passionate and serious about these types of issues and wants to be involved, and that's who I will be supporting this evening.
And the only way that I can answer that question is what I just said earlier, is that we want people to get involved, and here's a person that truly, truly wants to be involved and wants to do the right thing, and I would, Bill, if you want to make the motion? Yes, I'll be happy to make a motion for Christopher Burns on 17 Roland Way.
I'll gladly second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is new business, Benjamin Construction Permit to Obstruct. I talked to Rick earlier. It's 38 Bow Street. They're looking to obstruct two parking spaces, correct, Rick?
Yes, yep. And also to block some limited access to a public sidewalk for the safety of the public.
Police chief has signed off on that?
Yes.
So I'd make a motion to approve their request for a permit to obstruct?
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is correspondence.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there's one add-on, if the board would consider it.
Yeah.
The, I provided a brief memo and information from the Highway Surveyor. He's looking and has requested Mass Electric install three new telephone poles on Fisk Mill Road. That's the entrance of the Newtown Leaf Dump Site, again, on Fisk Mill Road. This will require the town to grant an easement to Mass Electric so that they can both construct, operate, maintain, et cetera, the new poles, and strictly to provide lighting at the entranceway. He's asked the board if they could consider that at tonight's meeting.
Yeah, Scott has expanded his leaf dumping and brush removal spaces to, you know, down off of 140, and I think he's recognized with the change in hours. My guess is that, you know, lighting would be helpful, and we want to make it safe.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so I'm happy to make a motion to support Scott's effort to light that area and to make it safe.
And I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, we have a letter of resignation from Daniel Fornier, the, one of the IT assistants.
Yeah, I can't say I'm pleased to accept a letter of resignation, but Daniel was a part of a process that helped us get started in a separate IT department, and I wish him a lot of luck. I expect that through their tenure here, individuals will have other opportunities as other towns see the need, and that skill and experience are well valued. So I'd make a motion to accept with regret and get him a note that we thank him for his time in the position.
I'll second that.
Rick, before I make that unanimous, as Selectman Buckley said, please make sure we send him a letter.
Yep.
Thanking for his years of service to the community.
Yep.
Now, it just begs a question. So we've lost somebody on the IT staff, and I just want to ask the question, what's the, what are the plans going forward, Rick, if there's?
Yeah, Zach's got a review with Maureen and myself to determine what we would need to do to hire a new IT person.
Want to take the opportunity to update the job description for?
Yeah, Maureen has been doing that. So she's been working on updating job descriptions, correcting typos or correcting so that they fit the actual job being performed. So I think the job description is pretty much there. We will take a look at it again, as will Zach, as the head of IT, and it's a good chance to look to see what our needs are and what we need to do, especially with budget season coming up.
Yeah, and, Rick, I'd ask, and through the board, I'd ask, you know, for feedback on it, if there's a way in which we can take, you know, openings and look to get them posted within two weeks. And what I'd like to hear is where there is, you know, roadblocks, hurdles, speed bumps to get that done, because we may be able to remove some of those, we may be able to meet, we may be, I'm not sure what, what gates the, our ability to quickly post something.
Yep.
But if there is something.
Yep.
So a posting should not require our approval for an existing, a pre-existing position, right? Would you agree to that?
Yeah.
Is there a legal obstacle or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
All right, so.
No.
All right. So if there's tweaks to the, if there's tweaks to the job description, could you get us a copy of that?
Sure.
If we have any objections or concerns?
Yep.
If none are noted, I would expect you'd be able to go off for posting for those, and that we're just adjusting these when it makes sense and when we have the opportunity as we repost. So we're ready to go, and IT department doesn't hit any snags in service, because obviously they're servicing a group of people across the municipality, and want to make sure that service isn't interrupted.
Okay.
And that general thought process for the two weeks, Mr. Chairman, for me, is for any position.
Well, and I think what's important, too, is, Rick, is I think maybe you might want to reach out to Dr. Josephson up at the, in the school system, you know, so that everybody's communicating together. You know, he's the director of IT for the school district, and maybe he might have some suggestions for you as well.
Okay, I'm going to discuss with Zach, since he does the day-to-day on that, I kind of oversee, but definitely I will speak with Zach on that also, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item under correspondent is the OUI notice, which we have in our folders just for informational purposes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say once again, as we, as we get OUI notices, there is nothing in the document that state police, local police, or anybody else can vouch for the validity of the document. That says that when people are found to be driving under the influence, it can either be truthful and honest response that this is where their last drink occurred, or they can think up the name of a place so as to not to get the establishment they were actually in, in trouble. So, you know, I've gone full circle on this, and it's my preference to have, to, number one, not read the names at this, this meeting.
I agree.
Number two, that, you know, I think the information ought to be shared with the establishment, but let Rick do that as an administrative FYI, because frankly, I don't know what to do with this data if I can't vouch for its authenticity or its accuracy. That's where I stand now, and I've come full circle from when we first started receiving these, giving them more credit than I probably should have.
No, Mr. Chairman, I agree. I'm in my fourth year now, and since I've been on the board, that we've taken as informational only, and I do believe the businesses are also contacted by the Attorney General's Office in writing, and I think that that's where it's best left, so that they know that that took place.
And I would also, Rick, I think it was important, is you, as the town administrator, contacted the establishment owners and just let them know that.
Sure.
You know, you made the list, and the board is concerned. We don't know the honesty of what the particular person that got pulled over is saying, but you did, unfortunately, you did make the list, and we want to make you aware of it.
Okay.
And I would leave it at that as well.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll take care of that.
Thank you, thank you so much. And there is no executive session tonight? Is Bill?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody, and I wish you the best of holiday seasons and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
No, I'm good.